When the light goes on.[1.45][1.45][laughter] All right. All in favor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have no board and committee reports unless you have something, Martha?
Not really, unless you want to brief update on Jordy's trail, the Clifford City Rail Trail parking issue.
There's no real news on it, right?
No, he's continuing to look at options. He and Doug and I went out and looked at that one lot we were talking about. He's also looking at the possibility of getting some other treatment. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. We have no citizens' concerns scheduled for tonight?
No.
Public hearing, 7:30. We'll have a public hearing on transfer of the liquor license by Byfield General Store.
David Hill.
That's posted for 7:30, so that's when we do it. All right, new business.
Town District.
Tim?
Town District.
What?
Town District.
Oh, don't forget that, okay.
Just wanted to let you know a few things that are going on. We're going to be having, actually, the Board of Health is sponsoring a Household Hazardous Waste Disposal Day on June 29th from 9:00 to 12:00. All the details will be posted on the town's website, and I believe they sent a flyer out as well. Just wanted to let you know that we did receive a notification about the Chapter 90 funds from the Senate. It's reduced slightly. The number is going to be 410-896. It's a slight reduction from what you had approved based on the initial projections. So when we go to town meeting that article, we'll have to make an amendment, ask the moderator to make an amendment to the lower amount. I will let her know that that's coming as well. Last Thursday, I believe it was, Martha and I had a meeting with Tony Komornik from the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission and received an update on the Plum Island traffic parking study. Basically, they, at this point, they've completed gathering the data relative to accidents, citations, and that type of information. But we knew when we had engaged with them that they would wait until the season got into gear before they'd start with the traffic count. So they'll be doing that soon. They're also conducting a review of our existing bylaws relative to parking. And then they're going to, they conduct what's called a level of service analysis, which counts turn movements, evaluates intersection geometrics, and identifies any potential site distance issues. So that's kind of the second phase of the study that will be ongoing.
Now, how many phases are there?
Two.
Two, okay.
Yeah, they just didn't want to do the traffic analysis in the middle of winter. They wanted to wait until the spring/summer season to do that. So hopefully, I think we're targeting end of June, early July for a report from them.
Okay.
We're, we had talked about in the warrant approval, the potential for a Veterans Service District. That is still, those discussions are still ongoing between Newburyport, Salisbury, Merrimack, and Amesbury about forming that regional district. And basically, what would happen is they would employ two dedicated full-time agents, service agents, to service those communities. And they'd be focused on providing assistance, you know, that were making it accessible to all veterans of those communities, coordinating their related events, and providing what other, whatever other support is needed by the veterans and their families. They're talking about housing it, the office in Amesbury at the Costello Transportation Center due to its accessibility as a transportation hub. And right now, we're still working through the legal requirements. That's why it's appearing on the warrant, because it would require special legislation to allow us to enter into this district proposal.
If we didn't get into this district, where does Raleigh go? Would they be in, is there an Ipswich?
I don't know where Raleigh is now. They're not included in this group.
Is there another district?
I know that Ipswich, there is another district, because West Newbury was part of the Ipswich District, and Raleigh could very well be part of that.
See, because where in that, where in that congressional district? So why would...
They're already formed.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Well, these are already formed?
This one is not, no, no, no. We have an, our Veterans Agent Services us as well as the city of Newburyport, and there's some retirements that are occurring, I believe, in Amesbury. So that's kind of what got the discussion started, so.
Tracy, any idea if these things work better as a district? I mean, who are we going to be able, I mean, if we want to look around and get some feedback, where do we go to deem this to be a good idea? Or is it kind of...
I think Ipswich has a very successful district. You could certainly speak with them. I think the only alternative for us is our agent will be going to run that district in all likelihood. So we would be faced with trying to find someone to do it. I don't think we could do it for any less, you know, less expensively than entering into the district model.
I think I was more thinking of, you know...
The services.
Now, will this give, the way this is written, will it give us the option of joining, or will we be tied into it forever?
The legislation will allow us to form one.
Will allow us, okay.
And then a negotiation will occur, and we'll decide, you as a board will decide whether or not you want to enter to the agreement.
And if something bad happened, we could pull out without going through Boston?
Mm-hmm. Also, wanted to report to you that a principal assessor has been offered the position and has accepted it. Her name is Michelle Branciforte. She is coming to us from the town of Middleton.
You spell the last name correctly?
And she will be starting on June 3rd is her start date.
Is that where she lives, is in Middleton?
No, that's where she's currently employed, as the assistant assessor there. I wanted to let you know that we had discussions with the fire company over in Newbury last week as we move forward with the planning of the public safety facility. The site selection committee made their report to the board, and the next step is to look at programming and start developing what the facility would look like, what the criteria is, working with an engineer, and determining the criteria for selecting the best possible site. Before we did that, we wanted to make sure that there were no other public safety needs, fire needs, that weren't going to be addressed. The last thing we want to do is move forward with the plan, spend money on engineering and design work, and then get to the point where we say, well, gee, we didn't think about facilities for fire, you know. We want to look at this from a long-term perspective. So we had a couple of meetings with the fire company, the leadership of the fire company. They would be reporting back to their group, I believe, the first week in June, and they will take a vote as to whether or not they want to have any involvement with this. We asked them to take a formal vote before we move into the next phase of design work.
Which company, this one?
Over here.
Excuse me, if not, that's just police and EMA.
Then it would just be police and EMA, yes. Yep. And that is all I have for tonight, other than the executive session.
You can busy.
Yep.
Tim? I thought he was up, Tim Perry thought he was up back, though. No one out there? Okay, maybe later. Do we know what he wanted, he was by Field?
He just wanted to, thank you, gentlemen, for the time.
Oh, okay.
Use of Field.
Wow, a little positive.
All right. One-day liquor license for Governor Dummer on alumni weekend, June 7th and 8th. Is everything in...
I'm making a motion, we grant it.
Okay, and everything's in place, Kathy? Everything we need, okay? Any motions are made? Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Requests for a banner on the upper green backstop for the Merrimack River Feline Rescue Society for their Strut for Strays event, May 19th. They'll remove it May 20th? Okay. Well, I just looked at the dates, and usually that is up there for a lot longer, but that's while it's going on, Frank?
Yes, we'd like to put it up tomorrow.
Yeah.
And then we'll take it down either the end of the day on Sunday or Monday during the day.
That's fine.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any other questions? No? Good luck.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Request for a banner for the upper green...
Next to vote.
What? I think we did.
Did we say aye?
Aye, okay, didn't say aye, they just nodded. Request for the use for the upper green backstop to advertise Byfield Days from May 25th to June 10th. Motion?
Yeah, second.
What? You said yes and seconded it.
No, he said, I thought he said motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, he said, okay, all right. All right, any other discussion?
I just, we've asked other people to supply us with a draft of what the banner's going to look like, and they did not. I mean, just...
Well, Frank's going there.
... observation.
Yeah, okay, in the future, we'll do that. All right, any other questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
Okay. Six, excuse me, request for the upper green Byfield First Parish Church. A request for use of the upper green, okay. Oh, for a church picnic and softball game, June 6th, 11 to 3.
16. Yes, sir. David Mann, member of the church, just coordinating, again, a time for family to come, picnic, and hopefully a pickup softball game right after church. And it happens to be Father's Day, so we're hoping to get some fathers involved.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any other questions for the gentleman?
No conflicts with anybody else?
No.
No. No conflicts of scheduling?
No, just with the Little League, and I let them know that that was the day that was taken, so.
Okay.
And they have just about over that time.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
You got it. Great. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Six, one-day liquor licenses, protection number two for functions on June 1st from 12 to 4, June 23rd, 1 to 5, June 29th, 6 to 10, June 30th, 2 to 5, July 6th, 1 to 7, and July 13th, 2 to 6.
Motion approved.
All right.
Second motion.
All in, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of the April 16th, April 23rd, April 30th, and May 7th meetings. Those are the ones that you sent through, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
I saw no errors or omissions.
Did you read it?
No.
You haven't read it?
No.
Okay, David?
I'm okay. Should we make a motion to approve all three at once, or do you want to do them one at a time?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And Jeff, you?
Haven't read them all.
Haven't read them, okay.
Were there three or four?
Four.
Four.
So there's four.
April 16th, April 23rd, April 30th, and May 7th.
Okay. It's the last one I have read, so.
And we have a letter of appreciation to the DPW. If you can find it, it's, there it is. It's to Mr. Timothy Leonard, Director, Highway Department, Public Works. Dear Mr. Leonard, on behalf of the residents of Colby Village, we wish to express our thanks to you and your associates for your fine work in clearing of snow from Colby Lane our first winter as a Newbury public street. Your attention to Colby Lane, one of the newest streets, if not the newest in Newbury, is greatly appreciated. Thank you. Tom Fruen, for the trustees of the Colby Village Condominium Association. So, that's, that's good. You know, I've got to digress a little bit here, because this is the newest road in the town. And one thing we're doing this year on our budget is we're reinstating some money for maintenance on the road, so that the new roads, we can, you know, spend a dime and take care of it instead of a dollar and fix the whole thing later on. And we've put crack ceiling back in, right, Tracy?
Mm-hmm.
And that's got a huge thing for our, you know, oil and roads that we've got, so that's a good thing. And we get these good facilities, we want to take care of them. Sam's doing a good job on the buildings and stuff now, so we can see things ahead of time, and that's good. Okay, and the letter from, you went over the letter from Representative Mira, Tracy?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, you explained that. Okay, well, we are in Chapter 90.
Does that pretty much correspond with what you're expecting?
With what? I'm sorry.
Was that figure the 410?
It was 411,000, so it was slightly less, yeah.
Yeah, so we're within the...
Pretty close.
Yeah, a hundred bucks off, like.
If we could be that way all the time. All right. We've got 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Now, we got warrants.
I could just give you a brief update on the media committee. As you know, we've been live for a while now, and quite a bit of what we're putting up right now is just sort of general filler-type programs, but as we get more meetings recorded and so forth, and we're also working with our neighboring communities, because some of the other cable TV channels around us have put together interesting things, like on the history of Plum Island and so forth, that we'll be putting on the air. We won't be able to do town meeting live, but we have purchased some equipment, so that we'll be able to tape it, and we're going to try to see if we can do better on the sound system over there, because as you know, the acoustics in the gym are not great. And then this is equipment that we'll be able to use off-site anywhere, so we'll be testing that out over the next couple of weeks before we get to, get to the meeting to make sure everything's working. The other thing that hasn't been quite hooked up in terms of the town website yet, but between Caleb and Richard Henderson, they put together a calendar, essentially a schedule, so you can see what's going to be on today. You can go to a typical calendar-type thing, pick any date, see what's going to be on the cable channel. And so that's up and running, and it's actually sort of connected to our equipment, so it's always up to date. And we just have to get the town website updated, so that there'll be a link.
Susan Neuss is working on that now.
To that, yeah.
Yep.
And so, going forward, I think that'll be handy for people that do want to see a particular item or something, that they can go and look it up.
Mike?
We're moving right along. I think something that we haven't resolved, the details, but we're going to be trying to work with Triton to get their, get the educational channel up and going with Triton. It's just, there's some technical issues, and perhaps another piece of equipment or something that's going to have to be purchased on one side or the other, but they already have much of what they already need over at the, at the school. So I think that'll be kind of the next phase, is to try to bring all of that onboard. And we're already starting to informally solicit material for the TV channels, so if people have been, you know, doing amateur videos that they think might be relevant, we've developed a standard operating procedure for reviewing that sort of thing, making sure there's no copyright violations or that sort of thing. So we'll be, you know, in the future, start bringing in locally-produced material if people are so interested, so.
And I'm working with Richard to make sure we have the appropriate insurances in place before we stop broadcasting, so.
When they first set this up years ago, they talked about having two channels, and one would be town business and one would be school, and that pretty much be the...
That's what we're sort of talking about here.
Yeah, okay.
So we've got the town side, and again, it's a, it's a public access channel, so it's designed to be both educational, government, it's PEG, Public Education Government, is the acronym that people use in this business.
Yeah.
So it's, it's all of the above, but the Triton stuff, you know, we're going to... But also, we know over the years that, like at Newbury Elementary School, many of their concerts and other productions have been taped in the past, so we'll be looking to see how we can start incorporating that kind of material into our programming as well.
So we'll have, after town meeting, we'll have whatever we need, like if we wanted to tape something over there for a Newbury Elementary production?
Yeah, I mean, it's a general-purpose set of equipment, so we can carry it anywhere.
Yeah, we're going around, okay.
And down the road, we're going to try to get it set up so we can get a live feed from the elementary school. There's some standard technology that works over the internet that, you know, as I say, sort of down the road, but so I think by next year, we'll be able to do a live broadcast of town meeting.
All right, that'll be good. I've got one other thing here, and SS County Green Belt and the neighbors of 4.2-acre Pearson Fields Conservation Restriction at 42 Main Street are planning a celebration of this recent acquisition on June 8th from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. We hope you will approve and attend the event, which will honor the Pearson family who've made this possible. This pastoral landscape had been in the family for 10 generations since 1709, still virtually unchanged. The events are as follows. Ceremony of accepting in perpetuity the agricultural restrictions. Snuff bond tours with the history of the bond as part of the snuff mill project complex. Wine tasting, pony rides, a mystery guest, nature and trail walks, hot dogs bake sale, and an elegant yard sale, children's games, music, and hopefully a dog show. All proceeds will go to SS County Green Belt to contribute to the remaining acquisition funds. Sincerely, Abudders Ross and Wendy Lyon, Joan and Dick Purinton, Trish and Jim Robinson, Ann Uppington, Tim Kiss, plus Sue McKay, who contributed and lived for 30 years in Byfield. So that's an invitation that we should probably try and get it on the website.
What was the date again? Sorry.
June 8th.
What was the time?
What, 9 to 3. Kind of all day. All right. Now, we got four minutes. Yeah, all right. All right, we have a hearing for, it's for a transfer of a liquor license, basically? Okay. Notice is hereby given as required under Chapter 138 of the general laws as amended that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 14th, at 7:30 p.m. at the Newbury Town Hall, 25 High Road, Newbury, Mass., oh, 1951, on the application of Andrea Altavilla? Is that close?
Yeah.
Okay. DBA is Byfield General Store, 8 Fruit Street, it's now 6D Fruit Street. Byfield, Byfield. To transfer wine and malt package goods store license to Wayne Altavilla Jr., DBA BGS Variety at the same address. Newbury Licensing Board, okay. That's the notice that was read. Now, we got about a couple minutes, and then we can start the hearing officially. Any, any other things? Anyone go to any meetings or anything like that? Well, I did today, all right.
Oh, great.
They had a hearing on a home rule petition that we presented to the state legislature, and I went and spoke for it. And what that was, was an article to allow Jack Van Loon to rebuild his building down on the Plum Island Turnpike.
So he went to Boston?
Yeah, yeah, it was in Boston, yeah. And so they, most of the day, well, basically, we went through that hearing, and Senator Ta gave a presentation to explain the other people in there, what it was about. Jack read a description of what he was doing, his lawyer spoke, and I spoke verifying that it was passed at town meeting. And the funny thing was, the only question that was asked, they asked what the vote was at town meeting, and I said, geez, I don't remember. I said, I want to say unanimous, but nothing is ever unanimous in Newbury. There's usually one or two people. And they all appreciated that, all the senators and representatives in there, so that was it. The rest of the day was spent on hearings on, there's some significant statewide zoning regulation changes coming up. And the interesting thing is, they had consensus from the home builders, from the Association of General Contractors, Trustees Reservation, Audubon, Conservation Law Foundation, and they're all in it, because Massachusetts does such a poor job on zoning.
Now, they're, they're all agreeing?
They're agreeing what needs to be done. And some of it is like, it's funny, because we're way behind in production of living units in Massachusetts, and that's hindering the economy and everything, and everyone's jumping on that. And it's funny, they, one thing they talked about is site plan review is now 180 days, and they think that's, makes it tough on people trying to do, go through it, and they want it to be a maximum of 95 days, and there was someone that said that was even too long. A&amp;Rs, they want them to go away, and because they think that a lot of the A&amp;R lots are better suitable for two or three or four houses than one. And they want to increase housing density in the right places. So, anyway, those are some of the interesting things. Trying to think what else they, and they had the who's who of land planning and everything there. Remember Greg McGregor, when we were on the Water Commission? Yeah, he was there. So, anyway, all right, 30 seconds. Can you see the clock from there, Mike? What time is it? 7:30?
29.
Okay.
So, you asking Mike, because he's looking at it this way, this might speed it up?
Okay.
Go up there and move it.
We'll try, try.
He's got the quick angle.
Oh, wait a minute, look at that one there.
Yeah, see? That's because of Raleigh.
All right, we're 7:30 declared. This hearing is, what do we need to do? Okay, it's open to the public.
You need to read the legal notice, right?
I did.
Just did.
I read the legal notice, so...
I'm losing track, because we were switching back and forth.
Yeah, I was trying to kill time. I did that, I did that killing time.
Yep.
All right, so what we have is a transfer of the license, again, like we said, from Wayne.
To Wayne.
No.
To Wayne.
It's to Wayne.
Yeah.
And it's the convenience store over at Pearson Plaza, and it says it's an unit of multi-unit buildings of block and steel, a one-floor with entrance in the front and exit in the rear. The application was filed April 10th, and it was advertised April 23rd in the Daily News. This didn't require the Abudders to be notified, and we have contact information here. The hours of alcoholic beverage sales will be 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. weekdays, except to 11:00 p.m. on the day of, I can't read that.
Day before.
Oh, day before a legal holiday, okay. And 12:00 noon to 8:00 p.m. Sunday.
That's just how their old license was.
I was just going to ask, is that the same, so there's no change of office of hours or anything like that? And, all right, motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Discussion? Anything from the audience, questions, discussions? And chief, have you ever had any problem over there?
No.
Okay. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Done, granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, we had to wait that long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, now, what else we got?
One last item, so.
Leanne Egan, Sunset Drive Parking.
Hi. So, thanks for letting me speak. So I know that the Planning Commission is doing what they need to do, surveying the land, you know. I need to include that, I think it's important, Tracy may be aware that they're taking account on citations that are being issued. There aren't very many citations being issued, so I think that they should really look into the calls that are being made by the local residents, because sometimes the police because sometimes the police can't get out there.
Okay, we can nash that onto them.
And that is plenty, and, or rather than citations. Another thing, I had a chance to speak to Graham Taylor last week, who gave me some information on the refuge, which I think is really important. There are more than two hundred and fifty thousand people that visit the refuge per year. Two point four people per car, which is two more than a hundred thousand vehicles, which is two hundred and seventy-three vehicles per day, three to sixty-five days a year. And that's a lot of cars per road, one way in, one way out, that's not being patrolled regularly. Three Saturdays ago, I called the police department to ask them to come down just to be mindful of traffic, because people were speeding as they sort of left the refuge. It was still daylight, but kinda, you know, a little after six. The dispatcher I spoke to said that the officer on duty was too busy. She'll come later. I called an hour later, she was too busy, she'll come later, is what I got. I called again, she said, her, he said, excuse me, that she's too busy. So between six o'clock and eleven o'clock, when I went out, there were eleven vehicles that were parked illegally. No one ever was cited for illegally parking, and no one was ever towed, and the officer asked to come down.
Excuse me, I wonder...
Oh, yeah.
Could you come up to the microphone?
Yeah.
Because what's happening is that...
Yep.
So...
People will see you, but they won't hear you.
Right, okay. So, I think it's really important, you know, I never gave you a petition. It's unfortunate that when we came in here on September twenty-fifth, there were some neighbors who were concerned that when the parking got extended, so unfortunately, we weren't a unit, but I was on the agenda. I never handed in a petition with any signatures on it, because at that point, I think it's irrelevant. I'm concerned about the safety of the people that live there, that travel down that road every single day, that bike, that walk, there's children. With that kind of traffic just going in and out of the refuge, and no one being able to come down in the course of an evening, I mean, how is that safe? And perhaps that was just one night, but regularly, there's one officer on duty. I'm not questioning the imminence of something else happening on the other side of town. I'm saying that it's important, if there's some sort of emergency, or just regularly, they need to, you know, be observant of the speed, and if, you know, people that are paying taxes that live there, it's just, it's not okay. There's traffic, all those cars, we'll just say two hundred and seventy-three cars going in one day, and then they come out in one day, and then you've got vehicles lined up all along the side. During the day, it's beachgoers, during the evening and to the late hours of the night, it's restaurant people. And nobody is able to, to watch and to see what's happening. People are going out of that restaurant, they're drinking alcohol, they're speeding, they're not paying attention to residents. I mean, shortly after, you know, one of those houses that went in the water, there was so much traffic, and I know that they couldn't be out there watching, but I literally got run off the road. I had to jump in a snowbank, because people are not paying attention on that road. There's no sidewalk, there's no room. And I think, with all due respect, until there is a decision made, since the question is, should there be parking or shouldn't there be parking, and the fact that there's a study being done on it, I think all parking should be revoked until that determination is made. With respect to the neighborhood, to the safety of children, bicyclists, me walking my dogs, any other vehicles coming by, if someone opens their car door as they're parking, whacks a biker, it's an accident waiting to happen. And I've expressed that before, and I'm going to express it again. And my final question is, on September twenty-fifth, we made aware that one of the neighbors on Sunset actually made those signs that say speed limit posted thirty. The chief said that he was going to look into the speed limit and change that, as it may or may not needed to be changed. So I'm wondering, A, if it was changed, and B, or if it was looked into, excuse me, because it wasn't changed, excuse me, and why it's thirty miles an hour versus twenty-five on Northern Boulevard, because that's the speed down there. So those are my questions for whoever can answer. Thank you.
The questions on the speed, I think, will come out with the traffic study.
Yes.
Okay, that's what we hired these people for. All right, so, you know, that's, that's one answer. You got a lot more questions, but that's one.
Sure.
So, yeah. Chief, do you have anything to comment?
Absolutely, I, I appreciate Ms. Egan's...
Please come up to the microphone.
Certainly, I certainly appreciate Ms. Egan's concerns. The night in question, three Saturday nights ago, we had one officer on duty, unfortunately. When we have that happen, we have somebody on call from home for emergency situations. That officer was tied up on a high-risk domestic violence call. She was doing investigation, helping to obtain restraining orders and that type of thing. Those events take a while. Sorry, nothing I can do about that. It's a parking complaint, so I wasn't gonna call somebody from on-call from their house to come out and investigate that. And I appreciate your concern, but that's not an emergency situation.
I understand that, and I'm not questioning as to whether...
If I may speak, the only other time you've called since January first was on May eighth. You called at one thirty-five complaining about dump trucks driving up and down the road at a high rate of speed. And I understand at that time, the refuge is repaving their roadway. You called at one thirty-five, my cruiser arrived at one forty-four, ran radar in the area for forty-five minutes. At two fifteen, went to your house to discuss the matter with you when you weren't home. So, we do respond when we can. Unfortunately, sometimes we don't have the people on the road, it's a big town, things happen. I would love for people to be out there every day. As a matter of fact, one of my officers sat out there Friday and Saturday night of this week because of your concerns, sat out there for three hours each night, observing the situation. Unfortunately, the weather was bad, and he didn't observe anything, really, too bad. The weather was bad both nights, but those are the types of things we'll do. I can't guarantee we're gonna do it all the time. I can't guarantee that we're gonna get there in a timely manner every time you call.
I'm not asking you to, and I said clearly that if something else takes precedence, I understand. That was one Saturday night. This goes on day and night, every single day through this high season, which we are approaching. I think if there is question as to whether vehicles should be able to park or not park, it should be revoked altogether until that determination is made by the people you hire.
And that decision's not mine to make. I enforce the laws that are there to the best of our ability. Sometimes our ability's fantastic.
Right.
Sometimes it doesn't meet your expectations, and I apologize.
Right, and I mean, I did speak to Graham about the vehicles, the big trucks.
Excuse me, please, address the board.
Right.
Right, I don't wanna get a debate between the two of you. We're the ones that, at the end of the day, have to make the decisions, take the heat, and, you know, so please, please address your concerns, Doug.
So, I, he's correct, I haven't called concerned all that much, because it's been the low season. There's less traffic, I mean, the nice days are coming, more people are coming, more people are coming. So I may have only called two times this winter and spring so far, but, I mean, on a regular basis, I will be calling if, if my concerns are valid, and I believe that they are.
Is, I mean, knowing Pom Island, I mean, I grew up on Pom Island, then I went to Salisbury, and then I returned to Newbury. So, I mean, there's always been a business on the end of that street. The refuge has been there, definitely, it's grown. You're always gonna have traffic there. I mean, are you gonna continue to call the police because there's traffic there all the time? Or is it just the parking that really bothers you? Because I think you gotta kind of get to, I think the study's gonna finally, you know, shed some light on everything. But I mean, is it just the parking? Now you've included the refuge traffic and the dump trucks, and I mean...
I'm including it because I think it's important, because there are vehicles parked along that whole sides, side of the, the road, and whatever you wanna call it, the shoulder. If there are vehicles parked there, the traffic is what it is. I'm not as concerned about the traffic. I did call about speeding, but, you know, you can't make everybody slow down.
So, it's the, it's the pa, it's the parking is the trucks are a matter.
There's not enough room.
Yep.
Excuse me, on that road. And I did call concern about the dump trucks that have been going in and out. And when I spoke to Graham Taylor, he let me know that a number of those truckers have been cited within the refuge for speeding, and he was not at all surprised that they were speeding. He would speak to the foreman and ask them to slow down. And since then, I've had the pleasure of being off for the last week. They have.
Okay.
And I haven't had any more concerns.
What I'm trying to do in my mind is, you've talked about parking when you've come in before.
Yes.
And parking to do with the Pom Island Grill. But it seems now that the refuge has a tremendous amount of cars, that everyone's speeding, and there's dump trucks going up and down the road. So, I mean...
Some things are in control and some things are out, but I think there's a huge factor when there's all that traffic coming in and out, and this is the busy season of people coming in and out of the refuge with cars all day and all night parked along that shoulder.
Would it help if we...
More traffic, more cars parked on that shoulder is, I mean, together, yeah, the problem. It's not the traffic just so, it's the cars parked, okay? If you wanna try to fit a vehicle this way, going this way, say me with my dog on a foot, you know, long leash, and then the vehicle on the other side, it's not possible. And I wonder if emergency vehicles can get down there, I'd like to see that happen. I mean, and I'm not asking jury thing, but if there was question in study...
They have the advantage, they, they put the...
We had both the chiefs in here, and they addressed that issue.
They did, okay, that's right, too.
Yep. And, and... What did they say? They said that there was no emergency access issues there, and MVPC will be conducting this type of analysis. We're just, we're not there yet.
Yeah. Been down there a couple of times myself, and I am, I would be able to get a fire truck down through there without any trouble at all. Many, many years being in the fire department, running there, I'd be able to get an ambulance in there. As far as the speeding goes, a dump truck goes by at twenty-five miles an hour, it looks like it's doing thirty-five to forty, because they're just big and they're loud, okay? The radar will prove what it is. As far as the speeding out on the reservation, a fifteen mile an hour limit out on the reservation, these guys are getting paid by the hour, of course they're speeding out there. So, I mean, you can't go by that with a fifteen mile an hour zone, okay?
I understood you.
I was out at the reservation the other day, and there was a little sign right there, fifteen miles an hour on the dirt road.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, you know, you want, so anyways, I really, I don't think the trucks are gonna be there that much longer. They're done, they're over with.
They're not my concern.
It's not an everyday thing with the trucks, right?
They're not my concern.
They were just, they're all done, hot talk, they're out of there, right?
Trucks aren't my concern. I, I, I have one concern, I called the police, I spoke to Graham Taylor, the problem's been resolved. They've slowed down. And he has told me that they've been cited within the refuge, and that he wasn't surprised they were speeding. That's not my concern, it's the regular traffic.
Then do, then, you know, because when you talk to us, it's hard for us to understand it, but it goes right back, kind of, to the fact that the parking is what makes the road, in your estimation, narrow. We'll find out from Merrimack Valley.
Yep.
But it, you're shedding a little more light, you're, you're also complaining about the amount of traffic that goes into the refuge. I mean, that's two hundred and seventy-five thousand cars or...
It is important, I think that, I don't know how else to explain that it is important, because coming into a busy season on the island, more vehicles, so there's an average. If you break that down, the numbers that I gave you, that's an average of two hundred and seventy-three vehicles a day. Well, two hundred and seventy-three cars are not coming in on a snowy winter day or a yucky fall day. A lot of that traffic is coming in on the warmer days, the nicer months. So, I mean, you could probably double it on those days, but who's to say? But that traffic does impact, because there's cars also on those warmer, nice days that are parked along the side. I, I don't know how else to explain it. It's all happening now, and I understand that they're going to be, you know, looking into the traffic, but I think it is very important for you to know and understand that if there is a question about the parking, why aren't you revoking it until the study is done? If there are so many concerns about it.
I'll answer that question, okay? Because we've been through the same situation at Byfield Center, okay? We've been through it, we, we changed some traffic patents, and then we brought in an engineering company, Anne Merrimack Valley, and when we got the public safety people involved, we were gonna change it back. And they said, once you start the study, stick with it, with what you've got, don't go back and forth. Okay, and that would be my feeling on it, okay?
And when I came in here back in September, I requested for the parking to be eliminated. I'm not sure where that petition came from, but I certainly did not hand it to anybody.
Okay, number one, we're not gonna, one person come here and say, we wanna change traffic patent or pat, or something. We, we hired Merrimack Valley, they're the traffic experts. When they get done with the report, then we'll do something. I, I mean, I think, I think that's the only responsible thing to do.
Okay, and, you know, then I'm done. But in the meantime, I certainly hope that there is not any accident and no one gets hurt, because you have been made aware of the situation, it's not fair, there's no room. I should be able to walk, and I'm going to walk in the road, and if traffic has to wait, they have to wait. I can't walk anywhere else, but in the middle of the road.
All right.
So...
Let me just follow up with that, just to clarify. Back when, before the, the study was, um, born, or you asked that, why was the decision not made not to revoke the parking? Does it have to do with the restaurant, is that what it is? You don't, you don't feel it's fair to the restaurant? Why is that?
There's, there's been parking there for generations.
Neither has it.
What?
Neither has it.
As, as far as I can remember, you know?
Yeah, same.
So has it.
Okay. Mike was a police officer when?
Yeah. You want me, you want me to shed some light on this a little bit? First of all, Pom Island is a, where people go for vacations, all right? It's not just, she's targeting the restaurant for some reason or other, now it's the refuge, okay? But a lot of people come there and they rent. There are summer rentals, there are a lot of things happening. And the people that rent want their families to come there, okay? And their families come, and they gather, and they enjoy the beach, and they enjoy the neighborhood. Parking is a problem. They do the best they can to get off the road. We had a, back when I was in the police department, I used to do a foot patrol down there. Yeah, we, they, they could stay for a certain length of time, and then we tagged the car if it stayed or if they didn't move. And, and they would move, and they'd go to another location, and they could stay for another... Yeah, all right. But that's basically what you're gonna have, it's not gonna change. And a lot more people are going to the refuge. And, and, and even during the winter, I noticed, I, I'm sorry to say, but, you know, in the middle of winter, when we were losing the cottages down there, the traffic was unbelievable. You know, people were coming down here, the, you know, the restaurants were, were doing a bang-up job, they were, they were, you couldn't get into them. And that was in the winter. Now we're coming into the summer season, and now the same problem's gonna present itself again. I don't know what to do, but I really, I, I don't wanna, as long as we can keep the roads open, we're not having a complaint from the fire chief, and I, I'm only giving you one opinion, too, I'm not speaking for the board, okay? But we're not having, I know the fire trucks can get up and down the street. I don't see any, I've been down there, spent a lot of time down there, I don't see any, um, there are, on Sundays, it, it's, or if the bridge opens up, there's a, there's a, uh, things sort of come to a standstill, and then it takes them a while to, to, to leave. But I don't know what else you can do, I mean, other than open the bridge and not let them any on it.
So what you're, what you're saying, Mr. Pollak, so what you're saying is, you, a selectmen, or at least in your opinion, you haven't heard from your safety personnel, that there's a safety issue?
That's right.
And there is another side of that area that people wanna use that space, too?
Exactly.
For their house rent, for their families, and for that restaurant, and so you're weighing those? Because obviously, none of you would want a child to be hit or someone hit walking a dog, so you're not making the decision based on that.
No.
But you just don't see that it's as serious, obviously, as, as she feels it is.
Michael?
Just to bring, bring the other things forward, I got there. First was the vacation park last fall, and the group just bought the parking lot, they didn't, I got that caught up, they, they bought that parking lot, which is no longer available. There was two more parking lots that are available for town, and it's like people are hiding on streets. So it's a, it's a turn of the issue, it's a turn of wars, taking it down.
And we started last year on getting some more out of the Olga Way parking lot, okay? We applied for a community development block grant, Martha was very instrumental in it. And Tommy Nee headed up from Pom Island, he was working on it then. And, but the concept was that more parking and down in the Olga Way lot, and then we would be, we would have, part of this block rent we were looking for was to get handicapped accessible path for people with wheelchairs to go from that parking lot up to the beach, okay? And it was gonna be, what, like solar lights for the thing, and, and it was gonna be... And it was gonna be, what, like solar lights for the thing and, and it was gonna be, uh, no impervious surface, everything drains into the ground and all that stuff. And we were turned down on the application for the grant, so, we're trying. Then I think, Jen, actually, you did a nice job discussing that. I don't want the homeowners to think that in any way, shape or fashion, that we're trying to present a hard in front to the fact that parking is a problem on Plum Island because we realize that. But because you've come in, you've made us aware of it, we decided, we thought, the most logical thing to do would be to get some more information than beyond what you've given us. Because the fire department has always said they can get through and the police department has kind of said, so, we've tried to weigh some of the issues that you've presented with us and the fact that, I mean, yes, if we strike all parking there, it'll probably present a real hardship on some of the people that park on the road. Definitely it could put the restaurant out of business. So, I mean, these are things that you probably think about more strenuously, I know you're excited. But because you're excited up here, the selectmen aren't just gonna get out and stop parking. So, but we're thinking about the issues, we're not taking them lightly. The pragmatic thing to do, I think, was to do what we've done. We've tried to take and hear from Mike, hear from you, and now we're gonna go to Merrimack Valley and at least get some information from experts, because you know something, we're not. And I'm not so sure, that you probably have a degree in traffic engineering, I know you're down, I know you're down there. I know, I know, I know, I know you're down there. And if it's a long leash, shorten the leash, because-
It's not a leash, so, best being able to go down the road, it's not a job, it could be anyone.
But I'm just saying to you, I live on High Road and I can't walk my dog with a long leash down High Road.
I'm not asking for a long leash, I'm asking for a walking style of road.
And then reporting, at the end of June, is that the reporting you're gonna do?
We're hoping the end of June, that's what we're targeting, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, you had a comment?
I just want to say a couple of things, I live on Sunset.
Come to the mic.
Oh, yeah, come to the mic.
And I do, I have a bridge up here, really, because we're kind of set up high. And I, you know, I know it gets to be, where is the issue? Because there are, there are a lot of issues, there are a lot of cars, there are cars parking, there are people walking dogs, there are people walking children, there are, you know, there are bikers, everything. So, when, and we've said this before, when the cars are parked, it forces everyone out into the street. Emergency vehicles, everyone is over the line, I think we've brought pictures there before, so, you know, there is that issue. It's like, it's watching, I drive to Burlington every day, I know what it's like, traffic. I feel like I'm on one twenty-eight from my deck watching this traffic, except there's people in the middle of it and dogs and, you know, all bikers and everyone else, and there's all these cars. And it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's a serious consideration. Maybe the emergency vehicles can get through, but they may have to come down to get through to help somebody else that's gotten hit, honestly. Because it's that serious, it really is that serious, I think. The other thing I just wanted, and I really wasn't even prepared to talk about this tonight, I don't know if there's a compliance issue. You mentioned the restaurant and we really don't want to pit ourselves against the restaurant. We know the restaurant has to do a business. But a lot of those people, most of the time at nighttime when all this stuff is happening, are for the restaurant. Now, I know the bylaws, it says that they have to have parking for their, for, per their occupancy permit. And I think it's, um, three, three spaces for every ten people and how many people are there. So, you know, they have, they don't have enough parking, I've counted the spaces, I don't believe they have enough parking, I shouldn't say they don't, but I don't believe they do. There's another compliance issue too with the intersection, because the cars are supposed to be twenty feet back from the intersection. And they can't, they can't possibly be twenty feet back there because there isn't that much room. So, I mean, there's a couple of compliance issues and I think that those, some of the things we can't control, but those are some of the things that we could control and make sure that they're in compliance. And I know Olga Way fell through, but I, I've made the suggestion before, the Peter Hall, I mean, I'm sure they look forward to having some extra cash. And I think it's, you know, except for some, when they have to take the Plum Island and things like, like that, their parking lot is pretty empty. So, that is an alternative that I would just like to raise too.
One thing that was brought up last time, and again, I know things have changed over the course of the winter, but I believe Danny Mahoney has an agreement that people can park at his place at night with the illness of the restaurant.
He does, he has a sign there, but people, Plum Island will park in front of the signs, so the people that come in can-
But, I mean, you know, I mean-
Yeah, and I don't know how many Danny can, Danny's parking lot isn't huge either, you know, but it's just, um-
Oh, that surprised you? Because you've got two lots.
And that would be wonderful.
But anyway, like I say, all that would help.
Wonderful, but it really is a serious issue and it really, you know, so it's just, I don't want it to be, you know, somebody's upset about something and, you know.
You made a good point about the intersection is set back and everything. Basically, almost by definition, every single thing on Plum Island is like non-conforming with rules and regulations and zoning. No, seriously, what, David, how many percentage of lots are non-conforming?
I was just, I was just thinking, I'm the former chair of the planning board and at one time we worked with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to try to figure out what the roads really are as opposed to where they were supposed to be. We finally gave up, it was so hard. And, you know, the problem we have is that this is an area that was developed many, many years ago when people would take the train out from the city, you know, catch a cab or earlier, horse and buggy out to the island to their rental place or the hotel that used to be out there. And it worked back then, and then the automobile came along and the interstate highway came along. And all of a sudden, you know, we have an urban planner's nightmare out there, the roads are too small, the housing density is too high. And then on top of it, what used to be summer cottages have been turned into year-round half-million dollar homes. And, but then to sort of take the, the concerns I think you and your neighbors have, it seems to me that we've got parking, we've got traffic and we've got speed, okay? And those are all things that don't mix well with, you know, human-powered recreation like walking your dog. And I think, you know, what I'm hoping, you know, I have a great deal of respect for Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, I used to be one of the commissioners on their board. You know, what they're gonna come back to us with will be, not only what should the speed limit be and where the parking should be, but also how can we slow folks down? We call it traffic calming in the business, because that's part of the problem, you know? Given the limited resources this town has, we're lucky if, when we have two officers on duty. And so we can't be out there patrolling all the time, but what you want to do is create an environment where people are not tempted to speed. And there's a lot of little tricks and probably that's what we're gonna have to do. And quite honestly, having parked cars is one of the ways of slowing folks down, unfortunately. But I think, you know, I, I know, you know, you're all impatient, this is something that, you know, the summer is coming. But also in terms of the refuge, that I think in recent years, I haven't noticed an increase in traffic. And again, the refuge is somewhat limited because they have limited parking. You know, once those lots are full, there's no place for people to park. In fact, I don't know if they're doing it now because they're dealing with limited resources as well, but-
I think they actually closed the gate when they-
The people have to come down there to find out the gates are closed.
Right, and then people used to-
I mean, it just adds-
Yeah, and we're, you know, we've just gotta develop an integrated program out there, but it takes time. And just, alls I can say is, please folks, be patient. But at the same time, if you've got very concrete proposals of things that we might do-
No, that's my proposal, so it's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing that, that, you know, we're dealing with a real mess, we understand it, that it's a real mess. And we're gonna have to take this in little pieces. And, you know, I think if we can get very concrete proposals, like, okay, if we're gonna have parking, we obviously gotta keep it away from the intersection, how far down the road should we go, you know, that type of thing. That's been the real debate, because we're, and the, and the parking side. But then the speeding side, you know, if it's really an issue, I mean, then, you know, hopefully, maybe we put some speed bumps in, I don't know. That's what the experts will come back and tell us. But, you know, we're trying to get an integrated solution because we fixed your piece of road, that's just gonna push the problem to somebody else's piece of road. And that, that's, I think, because we have to worry about the whole community and not just one street.
But when it got pushed, everybody was here, but not back and-
Right, and the ocean's pushing the wrong way right now.
But I mean, you know, David, David's, you know, articulated that correctly. I mean, Plum Island has been such a nexus of parking problems and, and transport problems and parking problems. I mean, that I think we've always been a little afraid to start to try to unravel it and straighten it out because, I mean, if you start to do something on one street, you're probably gonna have to take and correct all the sides. I mean, it could be, it could, it could become a real nightmare.
Unfortunately, this problem, it's exasperated on Sunset because of the refuge traffic. But we have similar issue on Old Point Road, Southern Boulevard, to a certain extent Northern Boulevard, because most of the people that park, park on the opposite side of the sidewalk and they walk down that side of the road. So, we do have that issue on other roads in the area too, that's why I'm hoping the Merrimack Valley study will-
But I mean, if you had to start to enforce that on their road, then you're gonna have to force it on everyone else's road.
Well, we try to enforce it on every road if we see a violation, but-
Well, no one's gonna be parking to be able to visit people's houses in Plum Island.
Unfortunately, on Sunset, thirty miles an hour, with people walking and cars parked, it's fast. But the law of the road is thickly settled, thirty miles an hour. Unfortunately, the law of the road is thickly settled on both sides of the road. Well, the Mars side of the road isn't thickly settled, obviously, so, I'm afraid the study will come back and say, oh, that's forty miles an hour. Which obviously it won't, the, the road's not fast enough, but, you know, it's not wide enough to handle that. But, you know, I can't set speed limits, we have to enforce what's there. And unfortunately, thirty's fast going through there, it is fast.
Trucks, I didn't even, didn't even think about the trucks, but I mean, I've been teleworking along and all of a sudden I hear these trucks go by and they, they are fast.
They are, they look fast. Unfortunately, on radar, if you get one going thirty-three or thirty-four miles an hour, that, that's probably the highest speed we've got on that road from those trucks. But they look like they're going fifty because that road's so small, yeah. So, and we had that problem on Main Street when they were doing all the work there, same complaints. And, you know, residents wouldn't believe it when we had the radar gun out and pointed, you know, the truck's going twenty-eight miles an hour. And they're like, you know, how, how fast do you think that truck's going? Forty-five, and you hit it, it's going twenty-eight, but it just looks like it's going so fast. So, hopefully that problem will be alleviated.
I remember there were a lot, when we were going through that, we started the traffic study over there. I remember you and John went out and I know John, and I think you did it too, they sat with radar, different spots on the street, and they asked the people to come out and sit in the car and see what the actual speed was. And that was in, you know, it was, I, it was eye-opener for me, you know?
Anyways, we did, whoever heard you, we have put Merrimack Valley Planning on it, wheels turn slow with them, they work at their own pace.
This is, this is actually pretty quick, how long we've been working on Byfield? Three years?
Three years, yeah.
Yeah, three years.
And I, I appreciate, I mean, and that's why it's happening so quickly, but I just, there are real concerns.
Yeah.
Could I have your name and address, please?
My name, that is your name, right now, Y L E, Carol's Oil.
Did you spell your last name?
Y L E, Carol. Carol, you might, Carol.
Michael?
Uh, another suggestion.
That's a Doyle too.
I have to just, uh, put a, a, it's not a full sign up at the Roals Lane, and I don't think they do anymore, but that might keep people all of a sudden, if they're waiting still in that lot.
We suggested that last year.
We've suggested that.
At the end of Roals Lane, okay, when you're coming down Roals Lane, it used to be a big, the refuge is full. Okay, so people wouldn't go down there, go and turn around, and decrease traffic, they'd be on that everywhere. And that would be something you could-
We talked about that last year when we, when we had these, and we talked about, with Graham, about putting one out at least the end of Sunset so the people wouldn't turn in there. And, I don't know, he couldn't seem to find a place to put it, he wasn't-
Right into the street.
He was, they were putting it on their webpage.
Oh, it's, okay, it's going on their webpage.
So, once you get, once you get in the path, though-
There are laws against that, on your computers while you're driving, right? You know, if you really think about it, it's an issue that occurs everywhere on the island. I mean, it is exacerbated somewhat by the fact that the refuge is there, because you do get more cars going. But, I mean, you have it, I mean, the whole island is fraught with traffic problems and parking, especially on, on the weekend.
But the cars that are going to the refuge, it's the parking on the side of the road that pushes the cars and the people up the street. And I think that's really where we started out with, that it was, you know, unsafe, it wasn't, was it even legal to park there? I mean, I've been there sixteen years and there was no parking when I moved here. It's, and the restaurant has, I mean, there, yeah, restaurant goes, so, during the day the beach goes, so it's, um-
And during the day, the people are walking down from the parking lots at the Wilkinson Bridge, you know? That's-
All right, Mr. Jen. We still have an executive session to go, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mo? Please.
I've been owning Sunset since nineteen sixty-nine, there was never any parking there. And Mike probably would remember this, but years ago, they used to close the refuge at a certain time because they said it was full. They closed down fifteen parking lots, you used to be able to park two hundred and fifty cars on the state, of course, the state doesn't care about it. They used to let them wait because they opened it up at three o'clock. And then it got so bad that they were waiting in line all the way down to the turnpike. So then they changed the landscape so you could turn around and they flagged everybody and said, "Come back at three o'clock." I actually was stopped on the refuge once when Filio was the manager, because I was doing over fifteen miles an hour. So I said, "Fine," so I went down to him and he says, "You know, I'll drive fifteen miles an hour, but your guys are going past my house doing fifty." I said, "If I have to obey the law, then you have to too." Well, they all started driving slow. Now, I watched the traffic, I watched the refuge, they don't get it, because the refuge people are still driving very fast out there. I don't mind now so much because I'm in a different house, I'm not like at the corner of Harvard. I have little nieces and nephews, we're playing out there with the grass, okay? Now, the issue is, I was wondering if the restaurant, their occupancy permit has been signed off by all inspectors. And at one meeting here, someone said, "Well, the state liquor commission made them enclose, put a roof over that because that's the law." It's not the law, I know, I own a restaurant beside a nother business. And it has to be fenced in to meet requirements so children can't be served liquor, it does not need a roof on it. And he, nothing against Mark, but he has used that to do all kinds of alterations on that building. Now, another thing, in my restaurant, in Hampshire by the way, when the state fire marshal comes in, they measure the square footage of the room and say, "Only so many people can sit in this room." I wonder if that has been applied-
Yes, it has.
I don't know what the occupancy is of the restaurant, but I know that a lot of times, not only are the people sitting at tables, people can't-
No, I had a conversation with the fire chief and he went round and round with them on that.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
But you could drive by and look in the window, it's a big crowd in there and they're standing, they're not sitting. They're supposed to be sitting, they're not supposed to serve more people.
I differ with you, because you, the, the regulations don't say stand to sit, they give you the total occupancy.
Yeah.
Okay, so, whether, but as long as, and I, I believe that the question was brought up a, a while ago about that. And the fire chief had said that he'd been down there, okay, and he said he didn't appear to him. He said he didn't take his clicker and make any counts, he said it didn't appear to him to be overloaded. So maybe that's something we should do a check on, Mo.
No, but he and Bill Inspector went down after that and they, and they-
And did a count, did some counts, okay, and that was random, right?
Yeah, and it was, they was rolling with it.
Yes.
Okay, so, they've, they've been down there, done random checks, that's good.
I'm, I'm not trying to put him out of business.
Yeah.
But he has a lot of very obnoxious customers, they turn around in my yard, I put cones out there, people stole them the cones, they're a nuisance.
You kid me, stealing the cones?
They're a nuisance, okay? And there's plenty of places to turn around on a street like the, the corner of the little brick house there. Uh, I don't know what the story is with these people, but they're really, you know, they're really a nuisance. And that's just, that's my problem. But it is like, last Saturday night I came down there, there was a car that was probably two feet beyond the white line. That definitely was dangerous.
Yeah.
One car, and it was three or four cars coming from the refuge, I had to stop.
Yeah.
So those cars we go by.
Well, I'm not aware of any law against being obnoxious, I kinda wish there was because we can really bolster our coffers with that.
What about the nuisance of people turn around and people's driveways? Is it, once it goes, if they post them, is that something that they, I, I don't, I'm asking, you know?
It's true, I mean, you have to be there physically, see it, and then we can summons them, you know, to court, but it, it's tricky.
Okay.
It's a waste of time for the police department, I understand that.
Yeah, you know.
You know, I've been down there a long time and people come down, they have a good time. But when they park on Sunset Drive, they really should pull over more.
Yeah.
I think, I'm not sure, but I think they should be on the right side of that flagline.
Absolutely, if my crews go down and see that, they will ticket. And we've written a lot, I don't, I can't speak for this season, last year we wrote a ton of tickets down there. So, and a lot of it has to do with the intersection, encroaching on the intersection at Sunset and Plum Island Boulevard. And a lot of it has to do with parking beyond and out into the road being a distraction. So they are out there, it's just not up there bothering us at all.
People are afraid because of the edge of the road, right, Mo? People are afraid because of the edge of the road?
Yeah, probably.
What would happen if they moved the parking lane to the other side of the road?
Probably, just more problems, yeah.
No, I just-
The thing is, oh, see, if there's somebody oncoming, if you don't stop, they have to pull into that soft sand and you know they can get stuck there.
Yeah.
I will say one thing, that most people obey the, the parking sign that says, "Do not park at the corner." Very rarely is their car parked there, they do, they do tend to obey that.
So, so you've still got a good line of sight looking out at the-
Yeah, now, the refuge just have a sign, like in the morning, I would leave in the morning, they had a sign which they did take down. If they didn't, the, the front end loads were gonna knock it down in the winter because they always push snow. But it was actually- But it was actually, traffic has, because if you stopped where that white line was and looked to the left, you couldn't see oncoming traffic.
Yeah.
And the sign's gone, so somebody must have complained to whoever charged the refuge. But the people that park there, really, they're probably afraid to park into the grass. And a lot of times, it's broken beer bottles here, things like that, which nobody cleans it up. I mean, if it was my restaurant, I'd have my employees go out there because, you know, it's creating problems with the neighbors. So they park over that white line.
You think, I don't know.
Actually, I have a little suggestion. I live in Byfield and I have a surplus of boulders on my property. And I'd be happy to donate them either to the town or the property owners so that they, people tend not to steal boulders the way they steal cones. But actually, more seriously, I think, you know, it's just very helpful that you aren't confusing occupancy with parking, but I think some people are. And parking is zoning. And when you have pre-existing businesses, they essentially get grandfathered. And so that's part of the issue we have out there. If this was a clean slate and we were starting from scratch, well, then, you know, they would be required to provide the appropriate amount of parking. But the issue we have out there is that, you know, we've had a number of businesses that even though they've gone through subsequent owners, they've been there for years and, you know, it was a time when not everybody had four cars in their garage, or at least two. And things have really changed.
They parked where that deck was, which is now part of the restaurant. Then it was a chicken place. Okay, there was never any problems there with parking. And, but Mark is basically, you gave him an inch and he took a foot. Now, what's going to happen next year? Is he going to want a second story? That's my question, you know? How far do you go?
If he can put park in under, then that would help.
Everybody else is going to have to go up on passing.
So I could deal with Danny over there and convince his customers to park over there.
He hasn't, Danny hasn't agreed with, because I, he talked about that and then I went and asked Danny and Danny said, yeah, you know, and.
I haven't been in there in a couple of years and I used to go in there, but he told me he has a couple of signs, but they're like small. I mean, he should, I don't need to think he's around me that much. He should be a more active owner, you know? Sooner or later, it's going to be a major problem and someone's going to get seriously hurt. And they're going to say, well, if the people on Sunset Drive have been complaining for years, so now you're going to end up having a liability issue for the owner of that restaurant plus the town of New Bern.
Yeah.
And why are we doing the guy a favor? My restaurant in Stratton, Hampshire, they don't allow any on-street parking. I had to have all the parking plans for every single car.
If that was a new facility now, like David said, undergoing current zoning regulations, that's right.
Well, my restaurant's been there since eighteen thirty-two, okay?
So you predated zoning.
Yeah, I'm pretty much guaranteeing, you know.
A pigeon post.
I do. It was a stagecoach stop.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I can park roughly forty vehicles and that's it. And occasionally, on a busy summer night, people might park out there. And the police are very good about it because it's not very often. And I've made more parking places, but I have the land to do it.
Yep.
You know, Mark is making, adding seats, but he's not addressing the issue of parking because he really doesn't care. He wants to make as much money as he can. Hey, it's America. Sooner or later, there will be an accident. And some smart lawyer's going to say, all these people addressed it. And they said, yes, we've done this to try to alleviate the problem. We've done this and so forth. Well, somebody has to step in there and be a little bit more serious about it. I'm not going to have a problem with someone walking along that street or one night, about a year ago, I almost took someone's door off because a woman just opened the door. Didn't even look. And I know if I take her door off, it's her fault, but I don't want to take anybody's door off.
Yeah. One of the things that hopefully the traffic study gives us at least a backdrop, an informative backdrop. Because it gives us information.
One thing I read too, and I'm not sure about this, but someone said they were trying to put a bike lane down to the refuge. If they do that on that side of the street, now what happens?
I don't know.
That's, that's in some master plan I've told.
No, no, no.
No?
That's, that's someone's dream, okay? It was, it was a tough sell.
It would have to be a one-way street to get a bike lane down there.
Well, you could always.
And, and you know, it shows the poor planning on that bike lane because the bike lane goes down the Plum Island Turnpike and then just ends right there. And then it's craziness after that, so. Yes?
I have a question.
Microphone, please.
Sure. I've been sitting here listening to you talk to Mo. I'm just curious when the zoning was grandfathered in. Is there any written information on that?
Well, we've been, we've been back several generations in the business, right? We went to, what, Mo, we went back to the chicken place, Four Seas?
Four Seas.
Now, what was there before Four Seas?
Wasn't there a hotel in that area back in the eighteen hundreds?
That was where the gas station.
Okay. Where the, on the office inside?
What was there before Four Seas, Mo?
It really wasn't operating. Then Crable bought that building and he bought the house beside it. He actually had, I think he had sixteen lots. He sold some of that little Brenner Way.
Okay.
Sold them. Then it wasn't, because that was back in the days of Mickey Valene and stuff. There wasn't the activity. Most of the houses.
So that was in the fifties, really sixties?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is sixty-nine.
Four seats.
Yeah.
Okay, so before that, I really didn't.
I think, just to, to make a long story short, when you get into this kind of stuff, every property's got to be researched independently. And unfortunately, where we, we are where we are today, for better, for worse, perhaps because of poor decisions made in the past. But it's very hard to undo the past. Alls we can try to do is do better in the future. And I think that's what we're, we're looking towards. But, you know, the zoning changes too, you know, over time. But ever since zoning went in, essentially all of Plum Island, most of all of Plum Island became non-conforming. And, you know, we had some extra levels of grandfathering in there that have since been removed because of the Plum Island Overlay District and so forth. But it's a very complicated issue. And that's why land use attorneys get paid such wonderful salaries. So we're trying to do the best with what we have today.
So are you essentially saying, I'm, I'm just a little confused. Are you essentially saying that when Mark bought that restaurant, he was grandfathered in the zoning to have cars parked there all along the road? I just, I don't understand.
I personally cannot address things at that level. I don't know.
The selectmen don't make those decisions. We do policy stuff, okay?
Yeah, zoning is.
Well, you, you said it was.
Zoning, it's a zoning thing, what? I mentioned that because it's a zoning regulation. It's not a town selectman regulation, right?
And our building inspector is the zoning enforcement officer. And if there's an issue, then it goes to the zoning board of appeals.
So it is documented with the zoning board, perhaps?
Perhaps you can research it.
Why is, why is the restaurant not responsible for parking? There's a lot of restaurants that don't have parking.
That's right.
They park in the street.
But we're responsible for the streets, so we're responsible for parking on the street. But we're not responsible for enforcing the parking zoning.
It's up to the person driving the cars, the side.
I'm talking about the road.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, like I said, we're beating a dead dog here. We got, we've hired Merrimack Valley Planning to study it. You're not happy because it's not happened quick enough for you, okay? And we're waiting for the report.
I think you're wrong and I.
Okay.
Your whole demeanor towards me is extremely abrupt. I'm not really.
You know, just kind of sitting here thinking, trying to bring it all in though, and at least the people that are still here. I, I'm not speaking loud for you. Even before the restaurant and even like Mo said, Four Seas and things. But it seems to me that there might have not been much parking on Sunset Boulevard. I mean Sunset, but, but it seems to me that people would park there and still walk to the beach periodically. No? I mean, no, no parking?
The town way back when did not allow that for a lot of reasons because everybody who lived between Sunset Drive, Southern, all those streets had all this traffic, people, nothing against families with children leaving trash, going out to the beach, to all those right-aways with some of those homeowners on the beach that illegally closed off. And they were all put there for ambulances. It was less than there was when I was there. And I've heard of fights of people out there. It doesn't affect me because I didn't use them. There Ben and Hill was one right away and, and the guy's daughter's an attorney, so how are you going to fight an attorney? Okay? But they used to park there and everybody complained because they were not allowed to park on Sunset Drive. They were only allowed to park temporarily until three o'clock when the refuge opened. And then it got to be such a problem, the refuge, the refuge people changed the architecture so you could make that loop. And they said, move on, okay, and come back at three o'clock. You can't sit here. They used to stop there, park, right, look at the corner of Highway, they wanted to use my bathroom. And only, you had to wait for a car to come this way to go that way because the road was too narrow. There was never any legal parking on Sunset Drive since I've been there in sixty-nine.
Well, do you remember when it did become legal? Because it has been legal for some time, but none of our board members.
It's legal right now. Like, like somebody just said, you have to hire somebody to research back forty years, whatever. And the town of West isn't going to do that. But I remember back then.
May I rephrase the question then? When did the selectmen choose to allow regular parking? Because that has been in place for some time and then the current level of.
I've been chief since two thousand and six and it's been parking over.
Yeah, and the current level of concern, you know, raised quite a bit because we extended the length of the area where parking was.
The restaurants got busier, the refuge.
Yeah.
It's got busier.
But I'm just saying that we, we have had parking approved by the board of selectmen. I just don't know when that happened. But it was quite some time ago.
I've been chief since two thousand and six and parking's been.
Yeah, but how, how long you been on the department? Because you were patrolling down there.
Nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-eight.
You don't have to tell your age, but anything like that.
You know, I was always a midnight guy when I was on patrol, so parking wasn't an issue on the island for me, so.
That, that trying to go back on.
Yeah, I remember the Four Seas. I remember, you know, when, I remember that it was open. The traffic, all, the parking, there was never enough business. The parking always stayed right in that little walk around building. So I don't ever remember there being a, a traffic or a parking problem there. But since I've been chief in two thousand and six, parking has been allowed on Sunset, so I don't know when it changed.
All right, you know, to go, it might have never really not been allowed. People just probably moved them along. So, I mean, how do we know it was ever, I mean, I don't know.
I couldn't park there, just kind of evolved.
Yeah.
But I don't know, it was never any parking because there used to be signs that said, no parking. And then, of course, you know, twenty, twenty-five years ago, people started making year-round houses. When I first lived there in sixty-nine, in the winter, sometimes I could look up on Winter Bridge, the old wooden bridge, which I love, and see one car an hour, car an hour, okay? Now, of course, even in January, it's.
Mo, I used to, I used to love the wooden bridge too because it never, the marsh would let more water through, but.
Four hundred and twenty-seven foot over.
Oh, my gosh. Now it's down to forty-four or five.
The bridge is being undermined.
But to be honest, what I meant by that statement, Joe gave me the Joe look because he doesn't know what I'm talking about. But what I meant by that, a lot of things have evolved on Plum Island. They might have not been sanctioned or not sanctioned, but through use, they kind of, you know, become part of the fabric of Plum Island. And it doesn't make it any easier to address them. So, I mean, when the word liability came up a little earlier and all the concerns that are well-founded, I mean, that's why at least for myself anyway, I'm going to wait for Merrimack Valley. I mean, it gave us a foundation for some of the things that happened though we did in, in Byfield. And we learned a lot, so we're going to wait. I mean, I'm waiting anyway. I'm not going to make any broad paintbrush strokes till, till end. All right. Anything else? No? Okay, motion?
Thank you, folks.
Quick, motion?
Thanks. Uh, executive session.
To adjourn this one and then go to executive session. We got the language here?
We signed, we signed a warrant for state election.
She gave you the motion.
That's what we did.
Mo, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I move we enter into.
I didn't see the warrant for the state election.
I put it under here.
Okay, but we haven't, I guess we just, that's a sort of.
A lot of signing.
Yeah, after, okay, but let's.
I move we enter into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Okay, folks?
Second.